All right, this meeting is in session due to the COVID-19 emergency Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors is operating pursuant to and in compliance with its emergency continuity of operations ordinance. While physical in-person access to these meetings is not permitted, public may participate in these meetings by calling 1-844-890-7777, access code 390313. If busy, please call again. I'm going to say this is a reconvene meeting and we'll turn it over to Doug.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you know, the board held a public hearing on April 20th at 7:00 PM on the proposed real estate tax levy, the EMS tax levy, the Poplar Hill tax levy, Poplar Hill CDA tax levy. And at 7:30 PM for both the county and school budgets and tax levies. Some final budget notes, the budget includes an across-the-board 5% cost of living adjustment for all employees. The state budget included a 5% cohort for comp board funding positions. In addition, seven employees have been identified for a one-to-two step merit increase. The proposed budget is balanced at the equalized tax rate of 43 cents with the additional revenue of 1.4 million budgeted for capital improvements. It's a line item 94,000, 0053. This funding would be used to give the upcoming capital improvement plan, which we anticipate being able to get completed this fall, a kickstart in being able to fund some of the projects. In addition, 185,000 has been budgeted for engineering for the Sandy River Reservoir and 200,000 towards future debt service. We have included a 10% increase for health insurance costs. While the county saw a 6.2% decrease in rates, we're hoping to be able to make a paradigm shift and make the county competitive with other localities in the region with our benefits package. Outside agency budgets have been included as recommended by the board in our March 23rd work session, then subsequently the work session after that, I believe it was on April 6th. We talked about a number of agencies, including crossroads. I would note that approval of the budget tonight and those amounts does not appropriate the money. We won't do an appropriation resolution until probably our June meeting. That's what actually authorizes us to spend or cut the check to the individual organization. So if you have any concerns, we can also make adjustments as late as the appropriations resolution. As noted above, the board authorized a real estate tax advertisement of 51 cents, which is eight cent higher than the equalized rate of 43. Once advertised, the rate cannot be increased unless re-advertised in a new public hearing. And obviously, there's no such requirement, the board would like to decrease that rate. You've got your, I didn't bring copies, I've got my copy of the proposed budget through any line item questions. One thing, it's on the back of the different motions. You've got several different resolutions. You have a resolution to impose the tax levies for county year 21, it's advertised. And then we've got the resolution for the school budget and a resolution to improve the FY 21-22 Prince Edward County budget. If we lower the real estate rate at the bottom there, we've got some, for each penny, the corresponding budget total that goes into the motion. And the amount of reduction, again, we're proposing that will come out of that 1.4 million dollar capital improvement line. Each tax, penny of real estate tax generates 185,470 dollars. There's also an impact, I think as Supervisor Booth knows, the public service corporation tax is based off your real estate rate, even though, so that's power lines and other public utilities. There is a slight impact because that's based on the 51 cent rate. We'll lose about 12,353 dollars per penny there. So those adjustments are factored into that budget reduction as well. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, the copy of the different resolutions are in your packet and staff is ready to answer any questions that you might have.
Do I need to make a conflict of interest disclosure statement?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make that at this time before we get into discussion.
Sure.
As a member of the Prince Edward Board of Supervisors, I, Jerry Towns, am disclosing that I have a personal interest in the transactions for the adoption of the fiscal year 22 county and the approval of local funding for the fiscal year 22 school budget. My wife is an employee of Prince Edward County Public Schools and I'm an employee of the P. My Regional Jail. I'm able to participate pursuant to Section 2.2-3112B, 1 of the Code of Virginia. Because the fiscal year 22 county budget and the local funding for the fiscal year 22 school budget affects groups of three or more, which are all county-funded employees, all county agencies funded by the county budget, and all employees of Prince Edward County Public Schools. Additionally, I am to participate in the adoption of the fiscal year 22 county budget and the approval of the local funding for the fiscal year 22 school budget fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I have filed a declaration of disclosure with the Office of the Prince Edward County Administrator and a copy of which is available for public review. Thank you.
I have one. As a member of the Prince Edward Board of Supervisors, I, Beverly M. Booth, am disclosing that I have a personal interest in the transaction for the adoption of the fiscal year 22 Prince Edward County budget. My husband is an employee of the Prince Edward County Sheriff's Office. I am able to participate pursuant to Section 2.2-3112B, 1 of the Code of Virginia. Because the fiscal 21 county budget affects a group of three or more, which is all of the county employees of all the county departments funded by this budget. Additionally, I am able to participate in the adoption of the fiscal year 22 county budget fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I have filed a declaration of disclosure with the Office of the Prince Edward County Administrator, a copy of which is available for public review.
All right, thank you all. I guess it's open up for discussion, pick a time as to what we want to set the rate at and anything else that we have questions about.
I've got a question I'd like to ask Doug. Doug, I got a call about the golf course situation. Did the golf course go up in the appraisal or the surrounding property?
You're talking about the Manor property? The, I believe, CDA rate was $1. And we had to advertise a rate of a dollar, but the equalized rate was 95 cents. So it went up, but it did not go up as much as the 18.27% average. And if you look across the board, Supervisor, well, you saw individual houses, I think, went up higher. Commercial properties and raw land, on average, I think, were lower. You didn't see as much of a jump or an increase. And I've talked to a few property owners that had timberland and farmland that was, it went up, but it didn't go up 18 or more than 18%. Obviously, some, you will find examples of that, but, and commercial property as a whole. So I believe the Manor as a whole, all that property did not go up that much.
Any other questions?
I knew we had mentioned, I know I leave the previous meeting, but talked about meal lodging taxes and could you elaborate on that? Where did we, you guys end up with that discussion?
I know staff is working on, we're going to have to bring back probably next month, I'll look at Sarah back there. But we've got a couple tweaks, the current ordinance is on the books for the lodging tax. We will be proposing some amendments, hopefully have a public hearing in June that will allow us to start collecting. Maggie, before she left, Maggie Van Epps had estimated maybe 50, $60,000 a year from the Airbnbs and state cabins and the other things in the community. So I think it's already on the books, we just got to tweak it and hopefully the Commissioner can start implementing it. After, I believe, July 1st, we will be able to consider the meals tax. And I would love to, if the board's interested, bring that back too. We'd have to put a draft ordinance together for that. And there's also the ability, other counties are talking about cigarette tax, that is enabled as of July 1st as well. It's a little more complicated because you have to have stamp on your, it's a little more, a lot more man hours involved in the collection of that. But they're looking at like a regional tax and stamp that localities can possibly work together on. I think that's something that I definitely want to talk to the Commissioner about if the board is interested in doing that. But obviously, those are things we can bring back to the board later.
Well, I like those suggestions because it's all inclusive of visitors coming through the county, purchasing meals, renting motels, hotels. They can kind of chip in and help out with some, generate some additional revenue instead of hitting the tax, putting all the burden on the taxpayer in the county. That could lighten that load with that.
I'm going to agree with that. I've gotten an awful lot of telephone calls and I think I'd like to see the rate lowered from 51 cents to maybe 49 cents or something, but just a lowered situation. But I would also, I like Bobby's suggestion of the 1% sales tax situation. And I'd like to see all the other taxes, like Jerry mentioned, apply, be that to meals, hotels, or whatever else. But there's a lot of people pretty much upset about how much their taxes are going up when it went up, you know, the appraisal went up 15, 20%.
It's quite an increase.
For a one to two step merit increase. The proposed budget is balanced at the equalized tax rate of forty-three cents with the additional revenue of 1.4 million budget for capital improvements. It's a line item, ninety-four thousand, zero, zero, five, three. This funding would be used to give the upcoming capital improvement plan, which we anticipate being able to get completed this fall, a kickstart and being able to fund some of the projects. In addition, one hundred and eighty-five thousand has been budgeted for engineering for the Sandy River Reservoir and two hundred thousand towards future debt service. We have included a ten percent increase for health insurance costs. While the county saw a six point two percent decrease in rates, we're hoping to be able to make a paradigm shift and make the county competitive with other localities in the region with our benefits package. Outside agency budgets have been included as recommended by the board in our March twenty-third work session, then subsequently, the work session after that, I believe it was on April sixth, where we talked about a number of agencies, including Crossroads. I would note that approval of the budget tonight and those amounts does not appropriate the money. We won't do an appropriation resolution until probably our June meeting. That's what actually authorizes us to spend or cut the check to the individual organization. So if you have any concerns, we can also make adjustments as late as the appropriations resolution. As noted above, the board authorized a real estate tax advertisement of fifty-one cents, which is eight cent higher than the equalized rate of forty-three. Once advertised, rate cannot be increased unless re-advertised in a new public hearing. And obviously, there's no such requirement. The board would like to decrease that rate. You've got your, I didn't bring copies of, I've got my copy of the proposed budget through any line item questions. One thing, it's on the, the back of the, the different motions. You've got several different resolutions. You have a resolution to impose the tax levies for calendar year twenty-one as advertised. And then we've got the resolution for the school budget and a resolution to improve the FY twenty-one, twenty-two Prince Edward County budget. If we lower the real estate rate, at the bottom there, we've got some, for each penny, the corresponding budget total that goes into the motion and the amount of reduction. Again, we're proposing that will come out of that 1.4 million dollar capital improvement line. Each tax, penny of real estate tax generates one hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. There's also an impact, I think as Supervisor Booth knows, the public service corporation tax is based off your real estate rate, even though, so that's power lines and other public utilities. There is a slight impact because that's based on the fifty-one cent rate. We'll lose about twelve thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars per penny there. So those adjustments are factored into that budget reduction as well. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, the copy of the different resolutions are in your packet and staff is ready to answer any questions that you might have.
Do I need to make a conflict of interest disclosure statement?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make that at this time before we get into discussion.
Sure. Go ahead, Jerry.
As a member of the Prince Edward Board of Supervisors, I, Jerry Towns, am disclosing that I have a personal interest in the transactions for the adoption of the fiscal year twenty-two county and the approval of local funding for the year, fiscal year twenty-two school budget. My wife is an employee of Prince Edward County Public Schools and I'm an employee of the P. My Regional Jail. I am able to participate pursuant to section two point two dash three, one, one, two, B, one of the Code of Virginia because the fiscal year twenty-two county budget and the local funding for the fiscal year twenty-two school budget affects groups of three or more, which are all county-funded employees, all county agencies funded by the county budget, and all employees of Prince Edward County Public Schools. Additionally, I am to participate in the adoption of the fiscal year twenty-two county budget and the approval of the local funding for the fiscal year twenty-two school budget fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I have filed a declaration of disclosure with the Office of the Prince Edward County Administrator and a copy, copy of which is available for public review. Thank you.
I have one.
Go ahead, Beverly.
As a member of the Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors, I, Beverly M. Booth, am disclosing that I have a personal interest in the transaction for the adoption of the fiscal year twenty-two Prince Edward County budget. My husband is an employee of the Prince Edward County Sheriff's Office. I am able to participate pursuant to section two point two dash three, one, one, two, B, one of the Code of Virginia because the fiscal twenty-one county budget affects a group of three or more, which is all of the county employees of all the county departments funded by this budget. Additionally, I am able to participate in the adoption of the fiscal year twenty-two county budget fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I have filed a declaration of disclosure with the Office of the Prince Edward County Administrator, a copy of which is available for public review.
All right. Thank you all. I guess it's open up for, open for discussion, pick a time as to what we want to set the rate at and anything else that we have questions about.
I've got a question I'd like to ask Doug. Doug, I got a call about the golf course situation. Did the golf course go up in the appraisal or, or the surrounding property?
You're talking about the, the manor?
Yes.
Property? The, I believe CDA rate was one dollar. And we had to advertise a rate of a dollar, but the equalized rate was ninety-five cents. So it went up, but it did not go up as much as the eighteen point two seven percent average. And if you look across the board, Supervisor, well, you saw individual houses, I think, went up higher. Commercial properties and raw land, on average, I think, were lower. They, you didn't see as much of a jump or an increase. And I've talked to a few property owners that had timberland and farmland that was, it went up, but it didn't go up eighteen or more than eighteen percent. Obviously, some, you will find examples of that, but, and commercial property as a whole. So I believe the manor as a whole, all that property did not go up that much.
Any other questions?
I knew we had mentioned, I know I leave the previous meeting, but talked about meal, lodging taxes and could you elaborate on that? Where did we, you guys end up with that discussion?
I know staff is working on, we're going to have to bring back probably next month, I'm looking at Sarah back there, but we've got a couple tweaks. The current ordinance is on the books for the lodging tax. We will be proposing some amendments. Hopefully, have a public hearing in June that will allow us to start collecting. Maggie, before she left, Maggie Van Epps, had estimated maybe fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year from the Airbnbs and state cabins and the other things in the community. So I think it's already on the books. We just got to tweak it and hopefully, the Commissioner can start implementing it. After, I believe, July first, we will be able to consider the meals tax. And I would love to, if the board's interested, bring that back too. We'd have to put a draft ordinance together for that. And there's also the ability, other counties are talking about cigarette tax. That is enabled as of July one as well. It's a little more complicated because you have to have stamp on your, it's a little more, lot more man hours involved in the collection of that. But they're looking at like a regional tax and stamp that localities can possibly work together on. I think that's something that I definitely want to talk to the Commissioner about if the board is interested in doing that. But obviously, those are things we can bring back to the board later.
Well, I like those suggestions because it's all inclusive. The visitors to, coming through the county, purchasing meals, renting motels, hotels, they can kind of chip in and, and help out with some, generate some additional revenue instead of hitting the tax, putting all the burden on the taxpayer in the county. That could lighten that load with that.
I'm in agreement with that. I've gotten an awful lot of telephone calls and I think I'd like to see the rate lowered from fifty-one cents to maybe forty-nine cents or something, but just a lowered situation. But I would also, I like Bobby's suggestion of the one percent sales tax situation. And I'd like to see all the other taxes, like Jerry mentioned, apply, be that to meals, hotels, or whatever else. But there's a lot of people pretty much upset about how much their taxes are going up when it went up, you know, the appraisal went up fifteen, twenty percent.
It's, it's quite an increase.
And also with the EMS tax on last year.
Yeah.
I like Jim's idea of the two cents, but I'd like the two cents to be added to the forty-three, not subtracted from the fifty-one.
And I agree with Bobby.
Forty-five, forty-six.
I'm going to say that I was, I've talked to a little accountant, I've talked to eight people today that, they called me or stopped me in the morning and said, what are you all going to do tonight? And I said, well, tell me, tell me what you, what you'd like to see and I'll bring it to the board. Of course, they wanted to go with the forty-three and I said, I don't think that that will go, but I said, I will certainly bring it. But my, I told them, I said, my intention is to ask for forty-five, which would be two cents over. And I have not talked to Bobby about it, but that's, several, several other people have called me and said, look, if it's, if you can equalize it at forty-one, if we went up a couple of cent, and we can get these other taxes in place after July, next year we can look at it again and see what we need to do or whatever else. So that's.
Ever do more about our capital improvement plan.
We will.
And look into that one cent sales tax.
And they, of the, of the eight, there are three people that talked to me, said, if this money is increased, can we earmark it for the capital improvements? And I said, well, that's, I think that's the direction we're going, but they definitely wanted to go to something that they could see, hey, that's earmarked for something rather than just going to the general fund.
Well, the one cent sales tax has got to go to the school.
Has to.
I honor some behind that. I think that's a great idea.
And I think it's more vulnerable first.
Something else that you mentioned, Doug, that I think we ought to strongly consider in the future is having a reassessment every three years rather than six years. It's too big a jump at one time for some people to handle. And I know it will cost us more money as far as hiring the appraiser goes.
I think that, my, my suggestion, I certainly would love to hear what Beverly's thoughts are. Four is, four-year cycle is what a lot of, where I left what we were doing. Four-year cycle allows you to catch a lot of those fluctuations. I wouldn't recommend a two-year or a three-year cycle. I'd say try to keep it at four is a good change.
Six years seems too long when, when it's such a big jump that they, it bothers them a lot.
And honestly, in a four-year cycle, you, in a, about another two and a half years, you have to start the process over again because it takes a year and a half.
Did y'all get higher on President Furby, do y'all assess them? Because one time we talked around the counties about hiring individuals, sharing it between, I do.
Now, we had somebody on staff that did the building permits and did the assessment during, between the general reassessment, handled everything internally, the other stuff. I have seen, Frederick County, Virginia is one that they hired somebody on staff and they do it, I don't know if it's every one or two years, and, you know, it probably paid for itself, but of course, they would pretty much keep the rate the same, just so we had a reassessment every year and it kept, and your property value went up, tax rate never changed. But, you know, you actually got a tax increase because you paid more in taxes. But yeah, I think that's worth having that discussion with some of the neighbors. We also, we also bid it regionally, and so you have one farm, two farms actually got hired, but we bid it to try to get more buy-in power from the firms. But we talked about having like one central reassessment office that worked for the localities that did, you did Lunenburg this year and you did Notaway the next year, and then you did Charlotte, then you do Prince Edward and you rotate around. There's, there's a couple of different models out there if the board wants to consider it, talk about it. But I think the, the good thing, I think, tried to do, we've got fifty thousand in the budget for reassessment. What I want to do is see us budget, if it's four years, twenty-five percent a year for each of the four years. So we don't have, you know, two hundred thousand this year and nothing the next year, but have a nice, consistent budget amount from which to pay for the reassessment.
So with the two cents, with forty-five, that's put about four hundred, little, close to four hundred thousand for capital improvement, the reset.
Well, the Sandy River, what's that's a capital improvement? Well, I guess.
Sandy.
Then the rest would be capital improvement.
I have, have talked to several people that way. And the Sandy River thing, there are people that want that water now that have already applied for it. And we've got to get this permit done. And something's got to be built. If we miss the boat this time, you can kiss all that goodbye. Okay? I agree with Jim, this assessment needs to be done more often because we missed the last window of growth with housing that we could already be collecting money on. Now, you all know me, I'm a little different from everybody else. And I think when I drive, and I have plenty of time to do that here lately, this money for this tax, if we do whatever it is, fifty-one, forty-three, a lot of the counties around us, which we did a little comparison the other day, the ones that have a little higher tax rate seem to have a lot more growth going on. More businesses are coming in and they're not really worried about the tax rate. And what we're worried about is the individuals in the county. But we've got an opportunity, maybe where we can set a little more money aside if we kind of keep it up a little bit for the different projects that we want broaden into this county, which will bring more people, bring more business. We need to look at that too. Now, Doug, this Sandy River reservoir, we spent a pile of money on it, it's going to cost another pile of money to ever get it up and running. We got to do something for the school. Our schools need repair and sooner or later, we got to build another school. If we leave this thing a little higher and put that money away is better than going back and asking for more later on, I think.
But that's my, my thought process too.
That's right.
Lou. However, I think that the fifty-one is a little bit, I mean, leaving it at fifty-one, I do think we need to reduce it. But if we do forty-six, that'll put us, bring us in about a little bit over half a million each year. It'd be five hundred and sixty-some thousand.
But you don't have to do it all in one year.
That's true. That's true. You don't have to do it all in one year, but, but it, but the citizens not going, if you, we lower it and then next year, we want to add a penny, add a penny, add a penny, they not going to buy that.
No.
Because you still increasing taxes. That can be a hit. I think whatever we do, if we're going to use it for capital, I think, and, and we earmark this money for capital, I think if we can do forty-six cents, which is three cent increase, we'll push it to five hundred and sixty, about five hundred and sixty thousand a year, I think we could manage.
Yep.
I think we could manage. If we look at the also, that's not excluding, considering the lodging, the meals, and maybe the cigarettes down the road.
In my business, I have to spend money to make money. I mean, that's just the way it works.
Most businesses do.
Sir?
Most businesses do.
Yep.
Well, this weekend, I was kind of surprised. I received a couple of phone calls from some people that everybody in this room know. They were saying, leave it at fifty-one. And I told them that I think fifty-one might be a burden for a lot of people. But I told them that I would advocate forty-seven, we'd be right there in the middle.
Yeah.
And we'd be four cents down from the top and four cents up from the bottom. So forty-seven would be a good percentage and it could really help us to start building this fund, to be able to do things at this county.
Really.
And we're more progressive now than we've ever been.
Yeah.
And, you know, and like Lou says, sometimes you got to spend money to bring money and you got to entice the people, let them see that we're making a difference. One of the things that's really been a big issue, I received quite a few phone calls that school wanted me to commit to building a new elementary school. No, I will not. And I said, I'm but one vote, but I won't vote for that. To do the roof, to do the renovations, to get it in really good shape, I'm all for that. But when we're talking about a forty-three to a fifty-five million dollar school, we don't have no tax rate to afford that.
No, absolutely.
Absolutely not.
You'd have to be ninety, ninety-five cents?
Yeah, ninety-five to a dollar fifteen.
It would cost a fortune.
Yes.
Well, it seems to me, listening to everybody, not everybody, but that have spoken, we're all for reducing it off the fifty-one. The only question is how much?
I just see a lot of money needed shortly down the road and it's, it's good to put a little away. And I've, I've had a couple of calls that they have no problem with the fifty-one and I've had a couple of calls that said they hope that we would reduce. Everybody's, you know, thinking about it.
And I had an elderly lady to call me this evening and for every penny that we increase it, it's fifty dollars more that she's going to have to pay on our house. She does, she can't qualify for the tax relief and it's going to be a burden. If we go up to forty-seven cents, that's going to be additional, what, two, two hundred dollars on her real estate tax.
What about forty-six?
Plus the EMS, EMS tax. And that's going to be a burden for her.
Right.
It's, it's a tough call, but I'm, I'm like you, I've talked to two different people this afternoon that, that really and truly, it's a burden for, and of course, their particular house went up some, they've lived in it for a while, but it's just gone up on top of that. And it was a, both of them are right at retirement age and said, look, so we're, you know, we would, we'd like you all to consider it. And I said, well, I'll bring it before the board. One, one other thing that we need to look at too, we do have some money, we've been able to pay for some things here in the past and not have to borrow any money or whatever else. So if we have something big come up, we can't always borrow until we decide what to do. That's just a, just a, you know, if, if we have to. I, I think that several people have asked about the school system. I had two phone calls today about the school, not the system, but the, the buildings and things, and just said, would any of this money go towards that? And I said, well, that's kind of what the board seems to respond towards the capital improvement would be towards the schools at this particular time. So I think citizens are concerned about that, Beverly and Jerry too. I think that that's a, that is a concern.
I think the forty-six, if we still consider, look at the lodging, do it, redo the ordinance, I mean, it's already there, enacted, and then consider the cigarette and the meals tax come Ju-, after July. And I think we could make it, we can, we can manage that. I really do. I think we've got enough, we'll be getting around six hundred thousand, a little bit more, that's, and towards capital projects. I don't know how much the school roof is, that, that be come back, I don't know. Have anybody, have you got that back?
And I, and I would say that, having looked at the inside, and Dr. Pry was with me, it's more than the roof. We've got to go back in and do some, now, some of it could be energy savings, like you, you know, replace LED lighting and some of the HVAC stuff. But I think it's, it's more than patching the roof.
I know that. I knew it was when I looked at it last year.
Are there any grants or anything for that, Doug, if you go energy saving?
Energy savings, what they do, there's companies out there that will work with you to, you know, basically, they take, you take the same out of your budget for energy, but you may save, say, save fifty thousand a year. They use, they put that towards, there's a state like loan program that they can help you do the renovations. So I think it's something they certainly can look at. You know, the LED lighting alone would save a lot of the energy in that building, but...
Did we do something similar with that, with the middle school?
With Honeywell.
Yeah, Honeywell.
That was a really big part.
Well, the appraisal on my house went up sixty thousand dollars. But, you know, if that's a burden, I'm just going to go see Leanne and borrow some money.
They'll loan it to you, I can assure you of that.
You know, I hear everybody talking and I'm just sitting and not saying anything, but I received calls today too. And one of the most interesting ones was my last call. And this lady identified, her name is so-and-so, and I'm the wife of Jane Ike. Have you heard of him before? And she just talked. She said, do you know me? I said, Ms. Ike, I know you very well and I remember your husband. And, you know, they are concerned about the raise in taxes. So I think, I think we need to lower it. And they talked about the school too. And the school situation, I mean, you're talking about mold, you're talking about a lot of things going on in that building and something needs to be done.
Well, that's why we need to keep on pushing to see if we're getting that on there.
The referendum.
Whenever.
Right.
And I'll tell you a lot of it.
Yeah.
If the county people voted up, then you know, yes, they're wanting to back private schools. They voted down, they're backing our real estate tax.
I think if we, if we get the capital improvement plan done this fall, we'll know dollar-wise what we're talking about. Then we can go talk to Delegate Edmonds and say, you did this for Charlotte, and I think there's at least another, one other county in there.
Halifax.
Yeah, Halifax. And Mecklenburg got approved and Mecklenburg just made the decision, they said, we're going to hold off because it's, it's a sunset, it's like twenty years when they can do it because they're building that big hundred and some million dollar high school, middle school. And they're going to wait because of course, they got the data center down there, it's helping to pay.
Data center paying, I'm, I'm, I'm sure they're getting that.
Joe Heinz or somebody told me that Microsoft has bought up all of the business and commercial property in Mecklenburg.
Oh, yeah.
Wow.
So they can afford to.
If, if this, if this thing goes through for us, it will certainly help us too. That's.
Yeah, well, then we can look at that.
Then we'll look at that, so that's.
Yeah, let's keep our taxes.
Where, until we, until we see what's, until we see what's, what's going on.
Exactly.
We, July is just around the corner too, to where we'll have some other options. And that's not, not very far off where we can.
Go ahead, Lou.
Doug, what, what's your opinion? I mean, you've been down this road before.
Well.
You think you're forty-six, forty-seven?
I'm not going to talk numbers. What I'll talk is the fact that, that, you know, coming in, I put the entry plan together, I've identified a lot of things that I know, and some of them I showed pictures of, we need to start, you know, it's like the chiller, two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Do we have money in fund balance that we could pay for it? Yes. I don't want to burn through your fund balance completely. It'd be great to put, even put in, you know, a hundred thousand dollars per year, per, to be able to address a convenience site every year. So I'm looking there, adding things that at least if we can get in the forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight range, that at least we're going to be able to do a few things every year and get some stuff knocked off without affecting our core finances. But you, we've got a good wish list and obviously, we'll come CIP time, we'll have to trim it if we don't have the money, but the needs are there. And, and, you know, I think Prince Edward's done a good job of putting things off and we've, time has come, we're going to have to start fixing a few things.
That's what worries me, that the list is getting longer and we need to scratch a few of them somehow.
Well, it's, and it's, you know, even that, that compactor, it's a landfill, and again, that's three to five years off. I'd rather start either putting aside money, but starting to think about that. I don't want to wait until I get there and then try to figure out how to pay for it. Somewhere in the next ten years, we're going to have to work on, you know, beyond the landfill. We've got another cell here, this one will last us a couple more years, and then you've got another cell, and then after that, we're going to be looking at, you know, planning for that. So some of that's on down the road, but, you know, the, the current list is extensive and we can will it down, whatever the board decides on as a rate, but just, you know, again, we've got, each penny is a hundred and eighty-five thousand, helps us address some of those things. I know like solid waste sites, that's one of the biggest complaints that all of us get. And we've got, we've got to make sure we have the equipment and the manpower and everything to operate our, our landfill, so.
With, with that said, to address, to address the landfill just a little bit, that's something that the board needs to think about and maybe Doug needs to look into or whatever, we can figure that out. But we, we need to see where we are as far as our price on tonnage. We are, we are not.
Thirty dollars.
It's thirty-seven, thirty-seven, isn't it?
Thirty-seven, I think is, it's under forty. And we've got, we're in a process, actually, Brittany in our office is working on calling, contact all the other localities and putting a spreadsheet together with all the different rates.
We're, we're cheaper than, than the majority, so we need to, that is something we need to look at. If we're going to take outside trash, we need to be at least competitive on rate. Give us, that would, that would take care of our landfill fund, so to speak, and, and help, help alleviate some money out of the general fund that, that we're looking at right now.
Compactor, three quarters of a million dollars.
Eight, eight, eight fifty.
Well, I'm going to make a motion to set the tax rate at forty-six cents.
There's been a motion made.
I'll second it.
Patty has seconded it. Ms. Pry?
Yes.
Myself, no. Patty?
Yes.
Beverly?
No.
Jim?
I'm going to have to stay here tomorrow.
Okay. Bobby?
No.
Jerry?
Yes.
Lou?
No.
That's a, that's a forty-two, it fails regardless.
Okay.
All right.
What's the merger of the board? Are you going to hire them and that or lower them?
We would say forty-five.
My, my personal, from, from everyone I've talked to, they didn't want but one cent, but I just plain said, I don't think that will work.
Mm-huh.
So I'm asking for two, but we can, you all can come back with another motion. So I'm asking for two, but we can, you, you all can come back with another motion, that's, I'm just telling you what.
Well, Patty had said forty-seven.
Yes, but I would agree to forty-six.
My situation is, I just want to lower it from fifty-one.
Right.
And I'm, you know, y'all can come up with another number, I'll go along.
I, I understand that.
I think meeting in the middle, half between forty-three and fifty-one would be pretty reasonable.
And that was the forty-seven.
Forty-seven is what, and that would give us a little bit more, and it's not really adding, well, some people's adding right much.
I could go with forty-seven.
Forty-seven would give us about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, about seven-hundred-and-forty-thousand, forty-five thousand a year.
Patty, you going to make a motion?
I made the motion for forty-seven.
I'll second that one. I know it's been properly made and seconded, Ms. Pride?
You got to, we got to start a capital project fund somewhere. Cap, we got to have a capital fund.
I say yes.
I'm going to say no. Patty?
Yes.
Beverly?
No.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
No.
Jerry?
Yes.
Uh, Lou?
Yes.
Five of three.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I think I got to milk some more cows.
Phew. Yeah.
All right. Still, I still think, I still recommend that we look at that lodging, meal, and cigarette tax.
Absolutely, and particularly the one percent sales tax. Don't hit Bobby out of hope.
So, Mr. Chairman, we need, still need to adopt the three different resolutions.
Correct.
Um, so the first one, the imposition of tax levies would be modified to show at forty-seven for real estate and mobile homes.
Merchant stays at seventy.
Work stays seventy, tangible personal property four fifty. Of course, the business and machinery and tools would show the, um, all the other ones would show their effective, effective amounts. So we get a motion to adopt that one.
Uh, is, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Pride, uh, Ms. Pride?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Patty?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby, uh, Lou?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
All right.
Next, we've got the, uh, school budget, and those numbers are correct.
That's a little bit over a half million dollar increase.
It's like five-hundred-and-seventeen less. They had a reduction in their, um, debt service, so true cost is four-hundred-and-some-thousand, but they'd asked for a five-hundred-and-some-thousand in operating, which we gave them, just the debt service piece reduced a little bit.
Is there a motion to approve the school budget as presented?
So moved.
Uh, and I'm going to second that, Ms. Pride?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Patty?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
And the third one is the FY twenty-two Prince Edward County budget. The modification will show, in the now-therefore-be-it-resolved line, instead of sixty-three million, four-twenty-six, oh, forty-three, using our chart for forty-seven cents, it'll be sixty-two million, six-thirty-four, seven-fifty-one, twenty-four, with the seven-ninety-one, two-ninety-one, seventy-six being deducted from the capital improvement line of ninety-four thousand, oh, oh, five-three.
Tell me that one more time, please.
Sixty-two million, six-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars and twenty-four cents.
All right, I guess we need a motion to adopt the county budget, is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Pride?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Patty?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
No.
Uh, Jerry?
Yes.
Uh, Lou?
Yes.
All right.
That's it for the budget. I just want to thank, uh, the board for their support working through the budget. Um, I thought we did a good job, given, you know, the COVID and, uh, all the other circumstances, and, and certainly, being my first budget, we hope to get better from here, so certainly if we can fill the finance director position, but, uh, Crystal and Cheryl and other staff really helped out, got us through it. So thank you very much for that. Um, the last item we have is a closed session.
Doug, I just want to say, if we've got a closed session, we appreciate what you did with the budget. Ran it smooth, we've had.
Yes.
Really smooth budgets in, in the past, and it was, just, I don't like it.
Appreciate that, I agree with you.
And still, even though we did raise taxes, we're still wanting to lower, and I know, maybe we don't feel like that's the best place to be, but I kind of feel like we don't need to be at the top.
That's right, that's right. This, this is one time we don't want, this is one time we don't want to be number one, do we? We don't want to be number one.
No, I think we find things out county fairly and evenly, uh, we don't get absorbed it, but, uh, you know, the schools obviously need some aggressive, uh, improvements to the buildings, I don't think we really can afford a whole new complex by any means.
Right.
So, that's all I have to say.
I've got a couple of things I'd just like to, to mention before we get into closed session or whatnot, and, uh, that is that we had a, a Zoom meeting with Tom Lewis, uh, last Wednesday, I guess it was, regarding help for the schools, and, uh, that went amazingly well, I think. Uh, Patty was there, and Doug was there, as well as, uh, Barbara Johnson and the, uh, Dean of Education at Longwood. Uh, I got a, uh, an email from the dean today saying they're on board a hundred percent, she's talked to her colleagues and so forth. I've got a meeting with, uh, Taylor Reevely on Tuesday of next week, and, uh, I'm anticipating good things there. I just got through three-thirty today with a meeting with, uh, Larry Stimper at, uh, Hampton Sydney, and, uh, he is amenable, and I didn't press him on him, but he's amenable to this, uh, chair teacher situation possibly, and, uh, I told him it wasn't something we were going to do immediately, because we needed to get, uh, things kind of from the middle school to the high school before we reached that point. Because I understand they've got a fairly strong STEM situation in the middle school. Uh, in addition to that, I also contacted, uh, NASA, because NASA had promised that they would do a lot of things, I think I gave most of y'all a copy of that, because it was unbelievable what they promised. But anyway, I had, I had to put down a date on a four-page submittal that I submitted to them, uh, about when this would be held, and I had no idea, so I put down May twentieth. And in talking to them and whatnot, I, and in talking to Odessa, uh, probably sometime in September would be a better time to find out about it, and Barbara Johnson will have to set, you know, the actual time. But I heard back from, uh, NASA, and they said, pardon my delayed, uh, response, there's no problem on this end of waiting until September. Uh, we will be here and we will be ready to assist to, uh, whenever you're ready for us. Please reach out with ample time to plan when you're ready, standing by. So we're smooth with NASA. Uh, we're smooth with Tom, and, uh, things are looking good there. And one other thing, uh, Joe Heinz on the reservoir situation said that he had promoted something else, that, uh, he said he's getting a favorable response. There was a fellow that, uh, works, I guess, for the state, that's involved in the approval on the, uh, lease on, uh, the reservoir, and, uh, Joe said, uh, that, uh, there are no lakes or waterways around here that are ideal for rowing for universities and whatnot. And this guy with the state is very interested in this, and Joe has measured and done all the calculations and so forth, and Sandy River would be perfect, and he said, it's easier than going to, I think the closest one's maybe up near Boston. Uh, and, uh, he said, I may get some traction off of this. And I said, I don't care as long as we get the lease, uh, extended on it.
That's right.
I think also that, uh, and, and Doug can check this, when you talk to him, I think Jerry Spates told me that the, the town of Farnival has to supply, I'm sure on this, but I think he said he has to supply water at that address. But ask Jerry, Jerry knows more about it than I do.
Thank you, Jim.
I would just like to make my comment.
Sure.
Um, you know, kudos to you, Jim, for going out doing all of this, but we have to keep one thing in mind, we don't want to jump ahead of the superintendent, and that school will make sure they are in align with what you're doing. I mean, it's very, very good, and we will end up the schools, but they are the ones who are going to have to finalize this. You see what I'm saying? I worked for that school system a long time. We provide points to the school, but we cannot tell them how to run their school. So just, just keep that in mind. I'd be very cautious of that. But thanks to you for all your efforts, Jim.
Is that, is that the right initials, SEOI, of the economic, or CEO, state?
S-O-E-I, Statement of Economic Interest.
S-O-E-I. Um, just bringing something forward to the board, the S-S-O-E-I, Doug and I have talked about this on, on a couple of different things, that of course, each one of us have to sign one, is, uh, running for the board, and most counties, it was brought to my attention Tuesday, I guess, in a, um, CRC meetings where I was over in Charlotte County, that most counties require that of pretty much everyone that works for them, which would be attorneys or any, anyone else. If we have that, which it's, from what I understand, Doug, please correct me if I'm wrong, it's just an ordinance that we have to enact, which most counties have, it would require Ms. Baker, who works for Crossroads, to submit, uh, an SEOI, so it would certainly open up, I guess, some transparency as to, as to who, what, and where is on her board and, and everything of the nature, and what she, what she's part of or anything else. Is that, is that correct, Doug?
It's my understanding that because we're the home or host county, that whatever regulations this board has adopted for staff, and, and certainly, I got to fill it out for the jail board anyway, so it doesn't, doesn't bother me. Um, but we could have Terry prepare. I've asked around the state trying to find examples, but we could pass a ordinance that would require the filing of Statement of Economic Interest for certain positions, which would in turn, uh, make that requirement as well. So if that's something the board is interested in requiring, then I can get with Terry, and we'll have something drafted up for y'all's consideration here in the next month or two.
Yes.
It's a, if it's, if it's, I'm not going to take a vote, I'm just going to ask kind of as a straw vote, if that's something that we would like, and then I'm going to ask Doug and start working on it, because it's, it'll, it'll certainly give the board some insight into the people that were paying, for lack of a better word.
I think it makes sense, since we the host.
Yep.
It came up, like I said, it came up in a CRC meeting, uh, which is seven counties, and, and each, each one of them actually was talking about the Crossroads deal, and so, uh, it was, it was asked of Ms. Baker's, am I correct, Ms. Pride, in a meeting, and she said she did not have to provide it, and the people were, they were dumbfounded that she didn't have to, because they thought that was part of it. But because we are the host county and we don't have that ordinance, it's not quote-unquote required. So it's just a, just one of those things that we want to look into and, and require it for whoever, whoever's, whoever we're funding, I guess is what it boils down to.
David, did you? I'm sorry.
Jack Houghton has supplied Doug and me with minutes that shows she, she lied the other day.
Yeah, I, I think I have a copy of that.
Yeah, okay, good.
I think that's what is, is right here. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Pride?
David, did you receive a call from Russell, Doug?
I did, I did. Had a call from Russell, sure did. That was about the school and the, and the tax, and, yes, ma'am.
And it's like they feel that we unaware of what's going on. So Russell, we know that, you gotta, I mean, it's time.
I've had, just, just to disclose, I've had several calls today about that, and I tried to explain to them that, number one, since we now have an elected school board, we don't have any quote-unquote power. When we, when we didn't have elected and, and we got to appoint them, then we had a little more, and I, maybe power's not the correct word, we had a little more oversight, oversight or influence into it, but now we don't. And it was, they said, well, you all still pay the, you know, you all hold the purse strings, and I said, we do, but it's still up to the, still up to them as to how they spend it. I mean, once we give it, we can't, as, as you said just a minute ago, it's, it's not, no matter what we suggest, or no matter what, once we give the money, it's theirs to do with as they want, so. And I, I said to these two people, I said, look, if, if you're having a, a problem, please, please address it within your upper rep, and if you're not happy, then, then change that, and I mean, that's, because it's not, it, it's not, it's not you all's, and I, I,